Good evening, everybody. We called this to order, this meeting of the Vader City Council. The date is May 10th, 2018, and the time is 6:08 PM. Rule call.
Judy Costello.
Here.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And again, the mayor has asked to be excused.
Absolutely. We will not do pledge allegiance. We did that a little bit ago at our workshop. Mayor's report. I don't have anything. Jill, do you hear anything from the mayor for the report? All right. Moving on to council reports. Council folks.
I would like to seriously thank everybody that helped and participated and was involved in the May Day Parade.
Wait, wait. You were on that. I was going to say that.
I was absolutely thrilled with the whole parade, everything. I thought it just went. I don't think it could have gone better. You know, the people that worked on it, none of us really knew what we were doing except for maybe Judy, and have it pull off that well. I was very, very pleased, and I want to thank everybody that came, whether you participated or not. I was very pleased with it.
I would like to add to that that this was the first year that all five council members were active in the May Day Parade.
True.
So I am proud of all of us for being there and participating and being a part of the event that went off really, really well.
Hey, you look very snazzy in your scouting uniform.
Yes.
Thank you. I enjoy wearing it.
That's all I have.
Council comments. Three, I've got five, I've got... The only other thing that I'd like to bring up, and maybe we can think about it and then add it to next council meeting, is additional dwelling units. Or accessory dwelling units. Basically, there's an issue where a person's dad is, due to financial reasons or medical reasons, whichever, I'm not sure, but that... I'm sorry. What? Nothing? We want to talk about being able, someone being able to add a dwelling... I wish that guy was still here, like a mini home, or an RV, or something so that their parents would be able to live on their property and not... We need to make the rule so that somebody can live on your property, as in parents or so on and so forth, to help them out. I just said that four times in all the same round.
Can I make a suggestion if you add that to our agenda?
This will be mine to draw.
Today, or...
For discussion today.
Oh.
When it comes time to approve.
I don't have a problem with it.
Perfect.
Jason might. Okay. So, I just wanted to bring that up and get it started so that we can go from there. And I think that that is it.
Any other council reports? All right. Hearing none. Moving on. Agenda approval. Sounds like we already had one possible addition.
I have an addition I would like to add for tonight as well. It came to my attention that we have no follow-up for our courtesy letters to find out if the people have accomplished or completed what we've asked them to do. So I would like tonight to maybe come up with a possible way that we can either attach it, you know, put in addition to the letter that we send out saying, "Please notify City Hall when this is completed." We can send somebody out to confirm it, or send out another letter between the two courtesy letters or something to get an okay to come out and confirm that they have in fact completed it before the second letter goes out. Because right now, apparently, we decided not to do that at some point, and I think we need to do that. I don't... I'd hate for somebody to get a second letter and have already done it and then go on, "Well, what's the problem here? We've already done all of this that you asked us to do."
And they just didn't come in and say, "Hey, I got this done"?
So let's put it as number seven so that we can discuss it.
But we need to get approval from the residents to come and have somebody come and confirm that it's done, or whatever we need to do.
So we'll talk about it when we get there. So number... I didn't hear an official number. Six.
So six.
Would be the ADUs.
ADU.
Six is the dwelling units.
Yep.
And then seven would be courtesy letter discussion?
Correct. And if we could add signage to number eight, it will be very brief.
Just signage?
Yes, please.
Number eight, signage.
Signs, signage. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda plus those three?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda plus adding number six, the ADUs, number seven, the courtesy letter, and number eight, signage, for May 10th, 2018.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with those three additions. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes' approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2018, as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Costello to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of May 2018 at $25,938.99.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff's report.
We take it to April, no?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did.
So for April, you had, we had 283 contacts, three calls on shift, 13 calls off shift, 13 traffic stops, one infraction, and one misdemeanor arrest. There was three crimes, two burglaries, and a trespass. I'm not a alarm specialist, but we cleared the burglaries and the trespasses. Number one with our canine was one way we cleared it, but also the person that had the burglary had the alarm type, and I've found it to be 100% reliable, the one that comes over your cellphone that has, instead of having them being monitored, because monitor alarms, you pay for those, but the ones that come over your cellphone, you pay once, and their prices are coming down, I know that, but yeah, you pay once, and all of those have always been successful for us because the person can call us right away and say, "Oh yeah, I see someone's inside my house right now," and yeah. So that's what, that was cleared by that because the dog called in and said, "Yes, there's someone in my house right now," and then we got the canine out and chased him to another piece of property and caught him finally.
Did he get bit?
No, he didn't get bit.
I was hoping that was a dog bite.
No, 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 no. So, so he didn't get bit, no.
We can only hope.
He is still in jail, though, so. And that's about it?
Excellent. Any questions from the council?
On April the 9th, you talked to 32 of us. What day was that?
April 9th is a Monday?
Really?
I don't know how they, you know, I don't know who they all contact, but that's, that's the contacts that they put on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeseman.
Thank you.
All right. Item number one, city business. Council to consider resolution 11-2018, award to bid to Barcot Construction LLC. So this is related to our A Street construction project. Our engineering firm, Devon Jackson, went through several bids and, from what I understand, quite extensive analysis, contacted all of them and went line by line and made sure that they were all able to do the bid for the price they quoted, and this was the one that he recommended. And it turns out that they're based in Chehalis, according to their address, so they're even a local firm.
Can I ask questions?
I can try to answer, though.
Would you look at line item number three on the bid calculation?
I don't know.
The contractor of choice is going to spend $11,400 removing a structure and obstructions on A Street, and the high bidder was going to spend $40,000. Do you have any idea what that structure is or that obstruction? I thought at first it might be the asphalt, but if you go a little bit farther down, you'll see there's asphalt.
I don't know.
Okay. Well, that's a good answer. That's a...
It's a shed that... Sorry. That was bad. Snarky. That was snarky.
That was snarky. That was snarky. No snarky.
Sorry.
I could only, I could only guess. That could be referring to all of the old lampposts. That could be referring to...
Oh, possibly. I looked and thought maybe sidewalk too, but it's identified elsewhere also. So that was just a question. Whatever it was, they felt like it was pretty standard.
Well, and you could see that that was one of the least expensive of the four bids. One company was quoting $40,000.
That's what he said, $40,000. That's why I wanted to know how big that building was.
Yeah, so, just says, "In obstructions," so it could be on any other things.
My next question, because I know you're very involved in this, Joe, is who is going to be doing the funding, the check dispersments is...
The way it works is that this, the city pays for it and then is reimbursed by the TIB, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, and they reimburse quite quickly, so.
Well, I guess my question is, Jill, is I'm the guy that's going to do the demo for the $11,000. I'm going to come and I'm going to turn my bill in, and you're going to verify that and then disperse the check for all of these individual contractors?
The individual, no. We only issue checks to the one contractor, the main contractor, which is Barcot.
Okay.
And subcontractors, they do their own... They, they figure that amongst themselves. Barcot turned in all, will turn in all of the...
Okay, so you're not involved in any certified payroll? You're not going to be doing any of the above? Because I thought if you were, that's a big, big project.
Yeah. I've done that before, and it is a huge project.
Yeah. Okay.
You've seen on some of the vouchers that we've already approved, you've seen TIB expenditures, and those are, those are checks to like the survey, the survey and everything, but that all went to Devon, Devon Jackson's engineering firm.
I remember they all did on that one. Some of those may have been made separately, but they all come through Devon.
Yeah.
Devon sends them all. He's checked.
So as a project, quote, project manager.
Right. He verifies that it's complete.
Okay. And the next question is, how much was the actual quote, or the actual project? Was it 750, or was that a...
Our grant was for $500,000.
$500,000? Okay. Because I was just thinking if it was the 700...
I think it was more than the...
Is it?
I think it was more than...
It was a half a million.
I thought it was a quarter, three quarters of a million, I'm around. Because several hundred thousand went to Devon for the engineering work.
I thought the engineering work was around 130 or 160.
And then he was anticipating the project would be around five, so that's...
Maybe I lost a quarter million dollars.
You're not in charge of checks, are you?
No. Change, change. I have to, I have to look at what...
750 was what I thought was...
I have to look at what the original, what the original grant was.
So the balance of that $330, then, $330,000 then for the project goes to Devon?
No.
No. The way they have it set up through TIB, the funding agency, is they have a certain amount set aside for the pre-construction work, the planning, which is what Devon has done, the engineering, including the plans all together, going out to bid and that kind of thing. And then there's a separate amount set aside for the actual construction of the project, and they've approved up to a certain amount. Once the bids come back in, then they adjust, they'll adjust it down to what...
To get to what actually...
To what the bid is.
Yeah, and from what I've heard several times, that the TIB doesn't like to spend more on engineering, which would be Devon's part, than 30%, so it's kind of capped.
And then one other question I had was on the information that, okay, the resolution we have in front of us is just right behind that one. And on the resolution, it says, section two, and it talks about the mayor authorized to do all of this, and then it says, "Once the city has provided the signed contract, obviously, and then the city with proof of required insurance and bonding in place," I would assume that Devon, those guys, would do all of that prior to, and it would be attached when he signs the contract.
This is already, in this document that you have, if you go further back...
I saw all of that.
It talks about, it shows that Barcot's insurance on here.
All of his insurance, so that's why it's already been provided, but yes, it would be part of it. Yeah, that's why I was questioning why that was...
Yeah, Barcot has, looks like they've got a million dollar insurance policy, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. No questions?
Yes.
What are you going to do about cost overruns?
They're factored into the, into their, in fact, he talks about it in here, that there's overages built into it. How do they word that?
High showing high probability of overage project savings or something.
Yeah. So it's been accounted for in the bid, or in the, the amount of the grant, so the grant's actually larger than what we're planning on spending, so. Yes?
Do you have a start date on this and how long it will take?
Said it should be completed within 45 days of the, of the start of the project, and I don't remember exactly when.
It's since...
It's soon. Very, very soon.
They had 20 days to mobilize and get started after signing the contract.
So it would be started here in the next, in the next...
In the month.
Yeah, in the next month or two, yeah. And then it's supposed to be done sometime in the summer.
Okay.
So pretty quick.
I move to approve resolution 11-2018, awarding the A Street project to Barcot Construction LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract in the form, in the form attached to the resolution.
I have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 11-2018. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving resolution 11-2018? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, city business. Council to consider request for garbage rate increase. Joe, would you like to explain why this is coming up? Please, thank you.
I can try. Mr. Cummins. Mr. Cummins had, when he came to city council at the end of last year, when he was doing the contract extension, had mentioned that he needed to raise the costs a little bit because of gas prices and whatnot, and so he, when we approved the contract, that was not written in as part of the contract, the rates are actually set by ordinance, and so, but he didn't understand that, and so at the beginning of the year, he made, wrote notice to everybody and raised the rates, but that wasn't the proper process to go through. The proper process is to, to have the ordinance changed, and so he wrote this request asking council, "We could please raise the rates for the, for the, what he's asking for." He explained it here. And so if council is okay with that, then what we can do is write up the amendment to the ordinance and have that for you at the next council meeting, which is a 55 cent increase. He is also asking something along the lines of having a regular...
Sorry, 50 cent increase.
55, if you read further down. It's 55 because he has to go back and credit that addition.
So he's going to charge 55 cents for the next four and a half years to make up for the six months when it wasn't done correctly?
That's what he's saying.
So it's going to take four and a half years for him to make up the months so far this year where he has to credit everybody the 50 cents?
Apparently.
Does that sound right? I'm not a very good math student, but that sounds a little excessive.
So for a year, he bills every two months, so he gets six billing cycles a year. So four and a half years would be 24, 25, 26 and a half billing cycles, times 5 cents, I can't do that in my head.
But he still charges every month?
No. Oh, yes. You're right, it's every billing cycle.
Yeah.
So it would be 10 cents. Yeah, so it would be $26, yeah. It does seem like that doesn't exactly work out.
I don't think it should take me four and a half years to pay that, to pay that amount back.
Well, then council can, if you want to suggest a different rate, you're more than welcome to do that, or if you don't want to entertain this at all, that's up to you.
I don't think the 50 cents is bad, but, and actually, 55 cents isn't bad if that's where you started with, but I think his comment here, the 5 cents will make up for the six months lost over the remaining 4.5 years. Maybe he didn't mean it quite like that, I don't know.
I don't know. But he's also asking the council possibly set up a regular review of the rates in order to, he's suggesting using the consumer price index with an 80% adjustment to regularly increase the rates instead of him having to come back and ask for it every year. He's asking if we could tie that into the consumer price index, and that's, again, something council can decide whether they want to do or not do. I don't know if Mr. Cummins has looked at the, what that would be if the consumer price index went down, which it doesn't do very often, but it does do, which would mean he would have to, the rates would lower if they did that. I think he's just looking for a way to regularly do a small reasonable increase to cover costs, so it's just his suggestion.
80% adjustment on what exactly?
That's a good question. I think he's talking about 80% of whatever the change is, whether the increase in the consumer price index, but honestly, I'm not sure I totally understand it myself. I am very confused by the letter along with my bimonthly garbage bill I get. So, having said that, I like Jeff. I have no problem that he wants an extra 50 cents or whatever, so what is the reasonable way to work this out so that we don't have to take four years?
You have to figure it out.
To figure this out, because I'm sure Jeff is trying to make this all happy for us, but like I said, I'm still being billed for last August on one of my garbage bills.
My goodness.
It's, my bills are just crazy. So, so anyway, what's the logical...
He's a great dumpster man. He's not a great...
No, he's not a great bookkeeper. So what's the...
I'm not sure if I like the idea of tying it to the consumer price index. I think that the city council should, should be the, be the decider each time.
Contract.
I mean, instead of just having it go up with, with inflation, even at a reduced rate at the 80%, but still. But once again, I don't have a problem approving, approving his 55 cents, but the consumer price index, not so much.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with the 55 cents. My problem is, it started off 50 cents, and now we're going to pay 55 cents for four and a half years to make up for six months.
Yeah, I have to...
Yeah, this was...
I want five minutes to figure that out. I think we have a, the audience?
Isn't 50 cents for six months, $3? Isn't that...
Pardon me?
If, he's going to have to be, isn't that only $3 that everybody's paying?
It might be, but it, but he's, that's why he's only asking for five extra cents per billing cycle for the...
Why don't you just put $2 on the next bill?
I would rather do that. I'd rather save it.
I don't know if we can do that legally the way the, again, it's a state regulation that you have, because you have to notify. I don't know if you can do that, do a one-time bump to kind of backcharge people. You have to notify them from this point forward we're billing. We can't, I don't think.
Garbage has a variety of...
Yeah, they have a lot of their own regulations.
There's, there's an entire set of state guidelines for trash and solid waste disposal and regulation districts and all kinds of stuff that I've learned over the last seven years that you just don't want to, don't, yeah, so.
Well, how will we deal with this credit?
Anyway. I'm, once again, like I said, 55 cents, I'm...
If we do 55 cents...
He's going to have to deal with the credit himself, but as far as going forward.
Yeah.
But if we just give him 55 cents, then whatever...
Give him 52 cents if you wanted, or get on that.
Well, the next year, he's going to come and ask for another little percentage raise too, so.
Yeah.
And we're still paying off the six months here, not four and a half years, so what's
going to happen?
I'm going to send Jeff in, and then you guys can say no, because we already gave you that extra 5 cents.
I would suggest, you know, this, trying to, trying to like figure this out for four and a half years for the, just the people that are paying garbage now and not the people that come on it, would, you know, that's just a, Melissa, a nightmare, so.
Yeah. And no on the increased index.
I don't mind, I don't, I know that prices, because of gas and insurances and cost of living, they need to go up a little bit on things, so. So I'm with Joe on the, I'm okay with the 55 cent, 50 cent increase, which is what we were supposed to get in the first place.
But he wants 55 cents now.
They can't have 55 cents.
That 5 cents is because of his error and not because of ours.
It is his error.
So you're going to ask, okay, so that we're going to direct our city clerk to do in the next two weeks to put a contract together with a 50 cent only increase?
I'm happy to put a tip jar out there with $3, but I do not want to spend four and a half years paying this off.
Well, next week, when he drives by, you can walk out with the...
That's, I guess, a little around, on his part.
Okay.
And no on the consumer rate?
No, on the consumer.
All right.
Do, do you want to include anything that requires the council, like at budget time or whatever, to reevaluate, or do you want to just leave that?
It's up to him currently, right?
Leave it up to him. I believe so.
Yeah. That's the way we've been operating so far.
Well, don't we have a three-year contract with him?
He wanted, he wanted like five, and we said no.
And we just did three.
Well, I think we did three, so he's not going to be around for another three years to do the increase, is he?
The four and a half years?
You mean the four?
No, I'm talking the 50 cents. We were just saying he'll come back to us next year for an increase, but he doesn't get to because he's got a three-year contract, or is that just for...
His contract doesn't, is, doesn't state what the rates are.
Money? He doesn't cover the money. That's just that he is in, he is our garbage man.
Yes.
Oh, right. Okay. I missed that, okay.
So he would come to us again and request another request?
Okay. Well, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay. So that, that's it? Through to the motion?
I don't think so. I think if you guys just tell me that's the direction you want, then I can get the ordinance ready for you and have it for you at the next council meeting.
So yes, an ordinance for 50 cent per month increase, not backdated.
And no consumer price.
Any other discussion on item number two?
Well, if he doesn't pick up our garbage, we'll hold him.
You tape a couple quarters to the garbage can.
I'll stand out there with that nickel. Now, just go for the $3. Yeah, just take over with it.
All right. Moving on to item number three, update on brush pile removal. I believe there is a letter from TJags. Mr. Parsons, you've been, you've been the champion of the brush pile. of the brush pile.
I talked to him the other day, um, and I hadn't told you this, I called him on something different and I said, hey, how's that pile going? And I found out about this. Um, and I said, well, if we extend this, how about if we open it up so that we can start putting stuff out there and you take whatever we put out there that's extra? And he was like, I don't have a problem with that. So we can open it back up, continue to put out there, and then he will, um, still take whatever is out there because of the timeframe. He, he said that when he first put the, when he first put the, uh, offer in, he was slow and then he's gotten a couple big contracts and he's just.
Is there room?
Busy.
Is there enough room for people to put some?
I thought that was.
I haven't been down there in a long time, so.
There's a little bit of room down there, I mean, I don't know if we wanna advertise it or just open it up and, yeah, well, let whoever.
We have people calling on a regular basis saying, is it open, is it open, is it open?
Yeah.
So.
And so I think that if they call or whatever, we, just open it up and go with it that way.
Are we doing that, opening it up, uh, monitored?
Immediately. Oh, not right now because we don't have anything to, um, we don't have any of that.
It's like it was before.
Yeah.
And, and what happened at, at the end of June, he says, well, I can't, I can't do it till July now, and then we've got all this added.
And then the tractor can't get down to the sewer or whatever.
Yeah.
See, I really hesitate doing that, open up, because I know two residents right now that have full blown trees cut up in their front yard ready to take down there. They're waiting for that gate to open. And they could really overwhelm that with just those two.
Yeah, I think it would need to be at least monitored to make sure that we don't.
I think this is very nice of him, and, um, I just don't, it's been changed so many times, I, I just don't trust that it will actually happen at the end of June and.
I'd rather leave it locked.
I would rather leave it locked too, and if it happens, it happens, if it, I think by the end of June, if it doesn't happen, we need to look.
Somewhere else.
Elsewhere, yeah. I think we've given, you know, I realize it's not his lock.
And I understand, but it's spring, so everything is overwhelmed at this, I mean.
But, you know, on the other hand, people can now get their free dump from, you know, Lewis County Dump Site, so, you know, they can go online, print that out, get a thousand pounds. Dump right now, so it's not like it's really hurting them at this, right, this point that they can't take care of it.
It's just a distance.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I can drag a tree, I can drag a tree down the, down the street, throw it in the brush pile, but you can't do that all the way.
You're not supposed to.
You know what I mean, instead of the back of the truck.
Okay, so I hear leaving the site closed for now and waiting until the end of June?
And then at the end of June, we make other decisions.
Okay.
Hopefully we don't have to.
Is that okay, Mike?
Yeah, that's fine with me, I.
But if you talk to him, I think it was very nice of him to offer to let us dump, that he would pick that up in addition, I'm just afraid of the mess that we would.
Create.
Create, like Jason said, especially this time of year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any, any other discussion?
We said we wanted it done by May, sorry, Joe.
No, it's all right.
We said we wanted it done by May, it's just Nick's May, right?
No.
Oh.
Seems that way.
No.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So.
Okay, any other discussion? Mike?
Nope.
Okay.
So we need to get back to them because, let us know if there's future business with them, so they're, they're kinda concerned that they.
I'll let them know.
That they've tarnished, uh, their reputation with us, so, yeah, gotta get back to them. Say we understand, but.
Yeah, however.
This is it.
That's why I did it. Was, was there a date?
Uh, in the May, the June.
Is what he said, in the June, okay, in the June.
The completion date?
Yeah, he's, his, the stuff that he has, that I, that I've been told that he has, it's not gonna take him long, he's got some big equipment.
Yeah, so he could have a lot, I was thinking beginning of June, but this letter says the completion date will be the end of June, so that might not be so bad.
Yeah.
Next.
Are we sure? All right, moving on to item number four, update on home-based business workshop. So we just had a big workshop about that, uh, we had some direction going forward already selected with the, uh, the volunteers that are going to sit on a, uh, committee to bring more information to the council. Um, is there anything else you'd like to talk about right now?
I think two, an hour and a half was good.
I think we, I think we hashed it out pretty good.
We were all done.
Just, okay, very good then. Moving on to item number five, update on Fourth of July celebration. At our last meeting, um, the city had decided not to be, um, a part of any Fourth of July celebration, um, this year, um, but it is on our agenda again.
We said.
That was my question, thank you, Joe.
We said that we probably wouldn't, and let's leave it off because it's probably skunked, but it is not skunked. It is going to happen. Um, I've got the same deal that the gentleman before had, um, I have a, uh, the shooter is, he's actually not a licensed pyrotechnician in Washington, is an organ, but the, the fireworks that we get are an I-4, which means it's consumer-grade fireworks, just like the other guy did. Um, we have, uh, insurance source that looks like instead of a couple thousand dollars, could be a few hundred dollars. Um, and, um, it will be a, instead of a forty-five minute show with lots of gaps, it'll probably be a thirty-minute show with no dark sky whatsoever for thirty minutes. Um, and, um, looks like we've got everything in line to make it go forward.
Just like that.
Just like that. Boom.
Yeah.
So I, yeah. So, um, I've talked with the state, uh, state patrol, um, I talked with, they're at the state patrol, who, they do the fireworks things, cause I was looking into, um, seeing what I would have to do to get my retail license so that I could get the same deal that the last guy got, and, um, I, while I was doing that, I thought, and I found out about it on the last day to submit that license, so I just called the supplier, um, Jake's Fireworks in Winlock, and he said, I'll give you that deal, no problem. So, we've got the fireworks, we've got, um, and, oh, and because the person that did it in the past was a licensed retailer, he had a lot of restrictions because he was a retailer of the fireworks. And because we don't have to be a retailer, we don't have a lot of those restrictions. Um, so we've got the price, the, um, as far as the permit for the display, it says on their website, permit for display, so I called, and Roberto Rodriguez is the person I talked to there, and he said if they are I-4 fireworks, you do not need a display permit. So we are good there, um, that's about it, any questions?
Are you planning on charging for attendance, are you planning on, is there gonna be fees?
We're not char, for people to go to it? No, definitely not. The only people, um, more than likely what'll happen, um, is vendors, uh, will get charged to set up there, um, which will be pretty minimal, but we still wanna charge for those. Um, other than that, everything else should, um, there will be, um, the vendors are going to charge people, but that's part of bringing money into, into town, so, um, go ahead.
Where will, um, the person shooting the fireworks be assembling these? Does he have a home, does he have a?
Most of it's going to be done at Jake's Fireworks.
Assembled on the trailer?
What's that?
How, how will, how will this get on the back of the flatbed trailer to get shot?
It won't be on the back of a flatbed trailer, he's going to.
I figured it out.
What's that?
I'm sure they have it all figured out.
Yeah, he has, there, there's no fuses involved with these, they're all electronic boards, so, um, everything is done electronically, he'll wire it all up beforehand, oh, well, almost wire it up beforehand, and then the day of, he sets it out, wires, finishes up the wiring, and.
So that's my question, is where is he doing all this wiring?
Right, that was the, that was the concern before, was that the, the storage for multiple days or weeks in advance within the city limits.
Cause it takes like three, it takes a good week for Reggie to wire all of that up on the flatbed trailers, um, and get it ready to shoot off, and so my question is, is where is this person going to be setting all of that up?
Part of it is going to be done at Jake's, at their place.
Well, I find that very interesting, go ahead.
That's what they talked about.
Okay.
So the fireworks will be there though until the day of the event?
They'll be there until the day of the event, but the other thing about that is Reggie, or I'm sorry, the former guy was a retailer of fireworks.
Because he had to be, was told to be by the city of Vader.
No.
Okay, I, okay, no more conversation for me then on this, I have no more conversation.
So the only thing I, I, the only thing I knew or heard of was that he was a retailer so he could get price. That was all that I knew.
Okay.
But, but because of that, um, we're, we're going to, if he's not, we're not, if they have to be stored for, it'll probably be two or three days, and more than likely it will be in a metal container at the site. So, yes.
I think it's great that you're doing Fourth of July, cause I think that was a really nice program that we had, but you had all these requirements for the previous man to do, and he, you know, it was my understanding from my memory that he was told during one of the meetings that he had to be a retailer to get the price, and he had to be licensed, and he had to be certified, and he had to do it, all these different restrictions, I understand those things, but now did all those go away? He doesn't have to be licensed, he doesn't have to be certified, doesn't have to be retailer, he doesn't have to.
And how can you get insurance for two hundred dollars when it was seventeen, twenty-seven or whatever?
Because we're getting it through a, through, through a fireworks company is where the insurance is coming from. And that, the insurance still has to be verified through our insurance to make sure that it's what exactly we need, but they're, um, they were saying it's, and it's actually a different than Jake's, cause Jake's offers firework insurance also, but it's actually through a company called Wolverine, um, is who is going to do the fire, the firework insurance on it, so.
So all the other requirements went away? You don't have to do all that stuff?
He was never given those requirements. The only, the only requirement, the only requirement he had to meet was where he was storing the fireworks.
During one of the city council meetings way back, I don't know, years ago, it was, it was said that he had to be certified by a certain amount of time, they were gonna give him one year to do it, and, or an extra year to do it, cause he wasn't yet, that was one of the things that was talked about. I know I drink, but I mean, I didn't remember, I picked that up.
I, I don't recall that, I'm not saying it didn't happen, because I'm just saying I don't recall, but, but we have, we found out last year that you don't have to be a certified pyrotechnics operator to shoot off the consumer, right? And that's why.
Because we were, you need to be certified to shoot them off, and then, then they found out that since we were shooting off a certain, yeah, a certain type of them, that you didn't have to be, but this year, but he still had to have a, a space built specifically to their specifications to store them, but.
Because he was a retailer.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
And this year, they just won't let him store it in a residential area.
We wanted him to store it at the school site.
In the metal building, and we didn't want to do that.
So the question on the table is, is the council interested in sponsoring a Fourth of July event? And if so, then I suppose we need to direct our city clerk to make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted before we go forward.
I personally think it was a great addition to, to the town, the town loved it, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for the Fourth of July thing, if, I mean, we still have the thirty, four hundred dollars set aside for.
Three thousand.
For fireworks, or?
Three thousand.
So, I mean, if that's what it's gonna take, I think, I don't know if, if the person before had some donations that might be able to be acquired also, I don't know. But I would go for, uh, um, another event in the year, that's for sure.
Yeah, I, I, last year I had a lot of fun, my kids had a ton of fun down there. I remember you, you were having a ton of fun.
They were.
Yeah, you really were. Um, and so, um, I'd love to see the event as well, if, if all of the red tape, as it were, could be, we worked through.
So who's in charge of it?
So far, I've been doing all the, all of this, so far I've done this, and, um, the, um, I was going to talk with the city, with Jill, and find out if, um, if Black Tie was to do it as a promoter, if that changes any of the requirements so that I can make decisions faster and just get it done, or if it is going to go through the city, or how, um, that should go, because one of the, one of the issues is charging vendors, because it's a city event.
That's the carnival side of things.
Yes.
And there's the fireworks side of things, and then there's.
But the whole event is the city's event right now. And so if you're, if you're going to be a vendor, the city can only charge you ten dollars, cause that's their.
I found out some additional information about that, that we may be, anyways.
Um, and so, um, we're gonna talk about that, and, but they, this, at the point was the city could only charge ten dollars, and I would like to charge more than ten dollars be, you know, I don't see a problem with a vendor paying a hundred dollars to fifty to a hundred dollars to be there, that's, you know, it all depends, yeah.
Is that one of the other questions?
That's cheap, cheap, cheap.
That won't be there.
Wow, I, I didn't know that, I've never.
Yeah.
Been at one of these, like, to analyze that.
Well, that's a, that's, I suppose, a, a.
That's something that you have to come back to us with, because.
Yeah, it's another side of things.
I'm, I'm not into having a, a large company come in and, and overcharge for vending into an event that, you know, you want your locals to be able to come in and share their, share their stuff with the locals, and that would be overpricing it, pricing everybody out.
Well, you know, we can also do some type of, my, my idea on the Fourth of July is not putting it on the budget next year. It should pay for itself. Um, and so maybe we can do residence, and we can talk about this, but residents, um, of Vader can have a free spot with the, just the ten dollar thing. Um, but if we brought Vader, if we bought, brought other red, um, vendors in from out of town to do their stuff.
Does it have a resident, non-resident fee?
Yeah.
Yeah, that won't work either. But I I understand. But um why don't we just try to get the event off the ground?
Yeah, we can discuss those specifics, I suppose.
Yeah.
So who would I direct somebody to if they were interested in being a vendor? Would it be you or the city clerk or?
Be.
Right now, it hasn't been decided yet.
So that's why I'm asking, who?
We don't know yet. We're still working on it.
You wanna do it tonight or?
My, well, we will have to, we'll have to talk about it, cause my ideas are. A lot different than, obviously, a lot different than yours. I wanna make it an event that brings money into the town to make money. And I wanna make it an event. Um not that the other one wasn't an event, but. I don't think, like I said, I don't think that we should have to, a Fourth of July celebration like that should fund itself. And be able to take care of itself. So.
Are you thinking then that it's not gonna be a city event next year? It'll be a private entity event?
I have no idea, no idea. And.
Is that, is that your goal? I'm good with that. We'll do that.
I don't, I don't, I don't think, well, I want the money to go to the city. I'm not talking about me charging a hundred dollars or are the people charging a hundred dollars, whoever does it. That goes into their pocket. I want the money to go into the city, but it has to be ran like a business.
Into a Fourth of July fund.
Into a Fourth of July fund.
That's what the um May Day people did. They collected money this year that goes to next year's celebration.
Yep.
And they all put it somewhere. Um and they're not making money off of it. So that's what I was asking. You want it to be able to support itself.
I want it to support itself.
Inside of the city.
Yes.
Okay, so then it would not be a city event.
Unless this, unless it's, that's what we've gotta talk about. If the city can run it, if it can be ran through the city, great. Then I don't have to worry about, for instance, me. I don't have to worry about insurance. Cause if it's, if if Black Tie was a promoter of it, then Black Tie would have to be paying for the insurance. Type of a thing. So that's all different variables. But for tonight, the main thing is, one, do we want the Fourth of July celebration? And um well, that is, I guess that's the big thing right there.
They already covered it. We all wanted it.
But are you gonna, I mean, last year we had bouncy houses for the kids and the different games for the kids and the dunk tank for the kids. Is all of that, are there's gonna be events for their little things for the kids to do that?
That's definitely, as long as we can find them. I know that bounce houses are getting harder and harder. Because insurance on bounce house, bounce houses skyrocketed. And I'm not gonna have any uh vendor there that doesn't have insurance. Or can't qualify into the city's insurance program. Um you know, so. Yeah, I want to have stuff for the kids. That's the main thing, is having stuff for the kids, having some food booths, some ice cream booths, shaved ice booths.
Well, I'm, once again, I'm I'm all for it and I would not have a problem asking our city clerk to try to figure out. I how to, if it's even feasible at this point. So it do- it does need to be, we've decided that it does, the fireworks portion needs to be a city event, right? If we're gonna give.
I don't know.
Money to a fireworks show, it's, isn't that a city event?
The city can sponsor it without it being a city event. The question is whether Jake's fireworks will still give us that prize if it's not a city event or. If it, I I don't know that they've said anything different, but.
Okay.
There's more details we haven't gotten into yet. This is all pretty new, so.
What direction do you need from us if we wanna say?
Are you in support of of getting the event, working on the event, putting it together? Is that money still available? It's in the budget for it? Are you okay with that? Then let's move forward and we'll have a lot more information for you, I think, at the next council meeting.
Okay.
We can work out some more of the details.
I'm not for it.
Why?
Um I think that, I think that the previous person, um and I'll just use the word poo-pooed, got poo-pooed on. And I'm very sensitive to that. Um for the last four years, I've helped those folks do that. And I think that there were a lot of restrictions put on him. And now all of a sudden, they've just poof disappeared or made so simple. And so, I mean, I'm 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 okay with the fireworks, entertainment for the community and the whole thing. But I think, I think we've just um snubbed our noses at one of our community members who really did a lot of work on it. And and I I disagree with that part of it. So that's just my feelings.
I kinda feel like we're stabbing him in the back.
Well.
It's a very hurtful thing to be here and boast about it.
Fourth of July, that's, that's all.
It's what?
He did a phenomenal job. Last year was absolutely amazing.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
He did great. And when I talked to him, I spent two hours talking to him, trying to get him to say yes to do it. And I s- I got it, at one point, I got him to say, I will do it if this and this and this get taken care of. And then it wasn't like three days later, he came to the city council and said he's not doing it, period. So it was either, and I told him, I didn't wanna do it unless he did the fireworks, because I didn't wanna have to deal with it. But once it was gone and I heard people saying, that's sat, that really sucks, that we're not going to have Fourth of July here. I figured, let me see what I can figure out. So I just made a couple phone calls and things started happening. And um the uh.
And all the same requirements are being made for this as they were for him. I don't understand why you're saying that all of a sudden they're gone. They're not. He's just meeting them. He's meeting the requirements and he's not fighting them. Um they're all the same requirements. He's just finding a way around, you know, getting it done.
Yeah, I.
It's just a per- that's my personal.
I I feel the same way, you know, I.
I feel, I feel like we've just stabbed him. I I feel, I feel very hurtful over it. And and I feel very sad sitting up here that this is what we're gonna do.
Yeah, the last time, I I talked with, I talked with Reggie as well in person. And the last conversation we had was I was gonna help figure out ways to overcome the issues. And he had a list of things he was gonna do. I had a list of things I was gonna do. And then the next thing I heard was that he he had quit before any of those had been completed. So um I I feel the same way as you do, but I also really would like to have a Fourth of July event.
Okay, well, that's, I'm just one person up here.
Do we want to direct?
I would like to direct staff.
To to find more information and then maybe at the next council meeting, we can actually have a maybe a a final decision on it? If it's even, if it's even possible.
Definitely.
Okay.
I'm not signed up, but may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Ask you a question. If there's three thousand dollars in the budget for Fourth of July. That's in the city's budget, why wouldn't that three thousand be spent on Fourth of July celebration for this year?
So that's how we're gonna buy the fireworks?
Between insurance and fireworks, it was never enough. So Reggie always went out and got donations from people. He weren't, ran his tail off getting donations to try to recoup. And they spent out of pocket. They spent a lot out of pocket.
Okay. I also are in favor of finding out if if we can meet the requirements. And then we'll have it on the agenda next me- meeting. Any other discussion right now? All right, item number six. Um this was added onto the agenda, accessory dwelling units.
Can we go over what I said earlier or? Lewis County has a accessory dwelling unit. Flyer that they have that has a lot of good information in it. And um the main thing for it is to um open it up to help um our residents that have. I've already said it three times. I don't know why I'm saying it again. Um that have dependent parents or health parents or. Financial problems or whatever it is, there's uh but this has a great um purpose and for it. I wanted to see it started at least, so that we can get it going.
Can I add a little clarity?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's necessary, but um so right now, the way the city regulations are is that you are, there is no allowance for having a second dwelling unit. Or an accessory dwelling unit on a piece of property. You can only have one on on one property. And that includes using an RV as a a unit right now, or as a dwelling unit right now. RVs are not allowed in any situation to be um are not authorized to be lived in. And so this is what he's talking about, is either adding a a small, you know, single unit um to your property. Or possibly an RV, uh being able to use an RV in some circumstances um to to live in. For maybe a certain amount of time or for a certain particular reason or make make some kind of regulations that would allow that for certain circumstances. And so that's what, it's kinda like along the same vein of the home-based business where the city can make regulations to allow this if they want to. They don't have to, but they can if they want to. And it would require, you know, writing um writing a a change to the development code. That allows that type of use on your property. So the question is, is council interested in looking into that and?
Well, I think it's a great idea for the county. I don't, no, I think it's a. I think it's something that we've had a problem with, issue with in our town for a long time. And um I think it's something that would be abused in. In no time. That's just my opinion.
I think that the uh um I think that they need to be permitted. Would be a way, I think that's how they do it, right? Is a, is a permit has to be um issued. To uh to do it so that we can.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, I'm staring at a piece of paper.
One particular case, actually, in the city of Vader, there is an ordinance that if you have an active building permit, you can live in an RV for a certain amount of time. I think it's six months or something, or three months. So that is allowed currently. But are you uh thinking just family members uh that having a financial difficulty or need extra help? Is that what you?
That's what I'm, that's what, the majority of it is family members, yes. Taking care of your parents, type of a thing. Or your adult child that needs help or whatever, but yeah.
Well, my thought about that is, is I think we should allow it for for someone who comes to us, stands up there, gives their presentation. And maybe we go out and look at the scenario and then um do a variance or, and I'm not sure what the word would be, to add. A conditional use of something. Now, we, now, now we're talking about um a person whose whose mother needs assistance and they live in the trailer. Or whatever, in a mobile home or motorhome next door to them.
Or a mini home is brought in or whatever.
Whatever, but they live there. Um however, in our community, we have multitudes of people living like that. That does, it seems to be a problem and we blatantly allow it.
And.
Well, we're, we're slowly not, slowly.
But we're, but the zoning.
We are allowing it, because I will, I will not mention any names, but we have a huge amount of people living and they've been there for one year. They have no water, they have no sewer, they have a porta potty, and they've just planted a garden with a scarecrow. Now, that is blatantly giving them permission to do this. And so without any rhyme or reason, and I've heard all kinds of reasons why, so.
There is a rhyme or reason, though.
How many?
There's a difference between what you're, the situation you're talking about. There's a small difference. There is a difference between that and somebody who's been doing it for eight years and has moved from one place to the other and knows. You know what I mean? The difference is that that the people that you were talking about that have been there for almost a year now. Is that they were trying to cooperate and get the right regulations and the right approval through the city. However, in the last six months, that communication has stopped. Also, in the last six months, the city council has told us they don't want us to do any more code enforcement.
Oh, I can't wait, Jill, till we get to line item numbers.
So that's enough. I'm just, that's the reason why nothing has been done at this point. Um and we, there's several others that are in line that have been doing it a lot longer that are also on the list that need to be addressed. But, you know, every time we do, people end up trying to sue the city and there goes, you know, our funds for code enforcement. So it's, it's a tricky situation. I mean, that's something that needs to be addressed and and it has been talked about a lot. At least in those halls, uh between the mayor and myself and some other council members, I think as well. Have had conversations about it from time to time, about the the different issues and that it's not being ignored. It's not being allowed in the sense that we're saying, who cares? I think that there's a disconnect between what needs to be happening and with the administration and the council's directives. I think that there's, there needs to be more communication and and bringing out what's.
Respect respectfully, um Jill, respectfully, um we're never informed. I mean, the particular situation we're talking about without mentioning any names, that letter was sent out without this council voting on it. And we specifically said to, because as Joe said, if we send out more, we'll be right back in that fourteen code things and a huge thing. And yet that went out without even discussion to us. And and now it is gonna create a problem and it has, obviously. But it is going to get, it is going to get.
It hasn't, I don't think that it's created a problem. I think that it's created momentum to to figure out a solution for that problem.
Which is what the courtesy letters are supposed to do.
That's right. When council members were discussed, did talk to the mayor about who the letters were gonna go out to talk. You, I I've told you to, at least twice, to go talk to the mayor about it personally. All I can tell you is what, all I can tell you.
After the letters were sent out.
He talked to them before.
I'm sorry, Jill.
He talked to people before.
The I, the agenda item is accessory dwelling units.
Okay, sorry, right.
So we're here to talk about accessory dwelling units. And if this is something this the council wants to entertain, um and if it is.
We have the courtesy notices on there, so that's what.
We're gonna get to that.
I think it's a wonderful idea, but I think we'd have to have several restrictions to it and guidelines to follow. But I think it's an absolute wonderful um idea. And then there's a lot of areas that do the the little mother-in-law homes, buying their homes and stuff like that. And and it's amazing. I mean, you've you've got your, a grandmother right there to, you know, to help out who's has no husband anymore. I think it's a fabulous idea.
This is another.
But then next year, it's covered with the tarp. And then next year, it's.
That's why they have to, they have to meet codes.
And after that, they got their grandkids.
We have to have the ability to draw the hammer. Code doesn't mean anything, although if we can enforce it. If we cannot enforce the code, the code doesn't mean anything.
Well, there are.
We are restricted to only sending out two nicely nice letters and we can't do anything about it, the code isn't gonna matter.
Right.
The code doesn't matter if we can't do something to enforce it.
There are a variety of limitations we could put on something like this. You could not have, for instance, you could say, an RV is not allowed. But a tiny home is, you know, that kinda thing. You know, is it a permanent structure or is it a mobile structure? So there are a variety of options um that we could, that we could uh add on there.
I I like the permitting idea. I mean, to be able to come in and get maybe uh a one-year permit and you have to renew it or whatever. You know, for your, for your parent or whatever. That's a great idea. I think that's a good way to be able to where you can say, okay, no, your trailer isn't up to code anymore.
Right, upgraded or do something, yeah.
I think that.
Maybe even having a set year to like new trailer, like a two thousand ten and up kinda thing or whatever, you know. Make sure that it's not a dilapidated, falling apart structure before they move it in and kinda thing. So I'm sure there's, there's ways to get around.
I like the ordinance that we have, but I think that this, I didn't wanna cut that one out, but add to it. I like the ordinance that we have, but I think that this, I didn't wanna cut that one out, but add to it for the situation, because I don't want a trailer parked next door to my house, yeah. Sorry, I didn't make talk.
I know, I think it's the city of Gresham, there's a friend at work that talks to me, and they have a, they have a program set up where they allow um like a tiny home type situation, and if your property is this lo, X Y Z large, they allow this extra structure on there if you meet these, meet these requirements, um and so I know other cities do do allow, I don't know, Gresham's pretty big, but just for example, it's not out of the question, um but we could put all kinds of restrictions on it, or case by case, we're small enough, we could go case by case.
I think case by case and and yearly.
If it's something we wanna entertain or look into it more.
I think it's a bad idea, too.
It's entertainable.
It's another, it's another really big discussion item similar to the retail spaces.
It is big, but it's, I could see a lot of people in Bay are um responding positively towards it, because I I think it's a great idea, and I, you know, we all have well, and most of us have elderly parents, and you know, what's gonna happen down the code, and my dad's pretty sure I'm just gonna move in with my mom, well, you know, gee, Dad.
All right.
I think it's a great idea.
So everyone says it's a great idea.
Yes, so now what?
Research question.
So, yeah, let's, I mean, I got that from Lewis County, um and I'm not one to recreate the wheel, just inflate it a little bit.
That's a Q and A, that's not an ordinance.
Well, the, I think the ordinance is on the back of it also, isn't it?
I have that ordinance number, what's that ordinance number?
L C C seventeen.
L C C seventeen dot one zero two dot zero five zero.
Because seventeen dot one zero two dot.
One, um seventeen dot one zero two dot one, oh, sorry, dot zero five zero.
Do we need to direct the city clerk to do anything, or can we research some of this on our own in the next couple of weeks, and she already has
I can research the research and then.
An immense of stuff to do, immense amount of work to do that we've given them.
And she's going, thank you, Jill.
We'll add it to the agenda for next meeting?
On the next agenda, yes.
Okay, Dawn?
You know, um King County, Seattle area, um, oh, we got these atrocious ordinances that got us in all this financial problems, they have an ordinance up there that they created for people to build these little tiny, tiny homes in their backyards, that and they have like compostable toilets and and things like that, and um the homeless are going, some of the people are inviting homeless people to come and live in those homes, but I mean, if if Seattle can do this for people, and or their parents, or whoever, it's for whomever, I guess, for the people can do this. So that might be something you could look into to see what they've done, um and how they've brought that about, but it doesn't seem to be a problem like that.
It's very, very impressive, I mean, these people that were once homeless, and we now have a home, they have no respect for themselves, they respect the home that they're living in, they're now going out and getting jobs, and it's all escalated, it's it's huge.
I'm just saying, if King County can do this, if you can park ordinances for them for other things, this might not be bad.
Yeah, I I'm not, I'm not too excited about homeless camps, or.
No, 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 no.
Homeless.
Oh, my God, don't get excited, they mean homeless.
Okay.
You could have done a drag out of conversation, you know.
I'm just saying, it it, you know, that's what they have done, and if they can do that, we should be able to come up with something that can help.
On a smaller scale, yeah.
Yes, no homeless.
I'm all about the family.
Okay, okay, all right, so next, next meeting, we'll talk about this some more with what we find out, yes?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh moving on then, no?
No, we didn't say who was gonna find out about the next, further disinformation.
I'm gonna do some reading on my own.
I'm gonna do some reading on my own, and I'll share with you.
I did some reading on my own.
Already?
I'm gonna do some reading on my own.
All right, we got it covered.
Okay.
Homework, people, we got homework.
Don't call it, well, I'm done with it, so you can call.
If any of you come up with documents that you want copied and given to council, please, we're more than happy to do that for you.
Excellent.
We can include them in, if we have them on Monday, we can include them in the packet, so.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, courtesy letter discussion.
This doesn't need to turn into a huge, lengthy, long conversation, because we've already discussed this courtesy letter and my bleeding heart, so we don't need to go into that area again, all I, I I didn't, I wasn't aware that we had no way to check up on the courtesy letters to see if they had completed what we asked them to complete, so I think we need to either add a paragraph onto the first courtesy letter stating, please notify City Hall when you have completed this, so that somebody can come out and verify that it's been completed, or call and schedule an appointment where somebody can come out and verify it, very simple, very easy, and it will get done then before the second courtesy letter needs to go on, so just maybe an additional little paragraph.
It's not on there?
No, no, we have no right to go check and see if they've done it.
No, 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 no.
No, that's not necessarily the case, I mean, we could still send the building official out, but council specifically stated when they set the, when they said that you wanted the two courtesy notices to go out, said you did not want any enforcement action beyond that.
We wanted a report.
Yeah, it would stop, we could not do anything, so at this point, we have some that have said that they have um follow, you know, followed the regulations and made whatever changes, but we have, we're not supposed to go check on them, is the way it was taken by the mayor and myself as far as as what we felt like council was trying to direct us to do.
Yeah, I don't think that's what we meant, but.
Cause we would have to send the building official out to check on those, we don't have anybody else to do that.
Well, we need a way to verify that it's been done before the second letter goes out, because we don't wanna send a second letter out and have them come storming in saying, well, how many letters do I need to get, I've already done what you asked me to do, because so much for courtesy, I mean, then it becomes an issue.
Who is it that you want to send to go do that, because the only person I'm aware of is is our building official.
And how much does he cost an hour?
How much is he gonna charge us? Fifty dollars an hour plus the trip fee.
Is he the only one that can do that, that can verify that it's been accomplished?
Can.
Can't you delegate, can't we delegate someone like Public Works or the mayor?
He doesn't have any more training in it than I do, I mean, I was the one that was doing that before, I would go out, take a photo, send it to the building official, so he wouldn't have to come out and make a trip fee, he could look at the photos and see what was done and what wasn't done.
But he hasn't gotten to that part, we just sent out a courtesy letter.
I know, I know, but that's what I'm saying, we haven't done the courtesy notices before now, so this is the first time around, but that's what I'm saying, is that it's kind of one place that we have a real disconnect, uh and we kind of have a gap that haven't, we haven't figured out how to fill, is who is the person on the ground here in the city that lets the building official know when there is a code issue that needs to be addressed and looked at? And who is it that goes out and checks to see, you know, if stuff's done, or?
Cause we just have our maintenance people go out, so I don't know why, because it's a courtesy letter, because it hasn't gone into code enforcement as of yet, I don't know why, say, we ask somebody to move two dead vehicles that have weeds growing out of them, for example, and someone can just drive by and see those vehicles.
So one of these, okay, so one of these is an RV that was connected to utilities, and it's in their backyard uh or side yard or something, so he would have to walk on their property and go around and look to see if it's still connected or not. Well, I don't know that you're gonna convince the Public Works employee, I don't know that you're gonna convince the mayor that that's a good idea to send our Public Works employee out to do code enforcement.
And there lies the paragraph that we add to the letter stating, you know, once you've completed this, please call City Hall um and we'll set up a scheduled time for somebody to come out and verify that it's been completed, then you will receive no more letters, you know.
See, this will. I think that's a great way to do it, is to include it in the letter.
The first letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cause if they haven't completed it by the first letter.
They will complete it after the second nice letter.
They will, they will, I have high hopes for these courtesy letters, I know you two just look at each other, and you grin.
No, he's looking at me telling me to shut my mouth and calm down.
I I think you you guys had a great idea, and and it's actually done, it's it's already worked in some cases.
Yeah, it's working.
So I am absolutely inclined to go along with more of your great ideas.
And you know what, the three letters went out, I think if two got accomplished and one's gonna fight it, that's not so bad, two out of three is not bad, we're still winning.
And and really, that third one brought us to this.
Yes.
And that's what we, you know, if we want to progress to get, to fix the problem, so that something else will happen, so the, so it worked also.
Yeah, and this resident might be very appreciative that we're trying to find an alternative um avenue to keep everything in compliance and code and everything else, and we're trying to make everything work, you know, I I don't know, I don't know the person, but you know, at least it's an effort.
We have a comment? Yes?
To go along with Jill's comment about disconnect, there's also seems to be a disconnect between what's happening out in the city and the city council, because it didn't seem to be, uh Mr. Parsons didn't seem to be aware of the third letter that went out when I called him about it.
I was aware of the third letter, I, and.
Anyway, if he were, you didn't act like it, but I know that some of the others were surprised as well that a third letter went out, because they thought only two were going out, so maybe there could be a connection that if five letters are going out, the five of you are told that five letters are going out, so somebody doesn't grab you by the lapel and shake you and say, why'd you send me this letter, you know, you people are kind of the face, uh you know, we know that you're our household people, and if someone comes up to you and yells at you about something, you should be aware of what they're talking about.
And I, and I still need clarity on how Linda's gonna get a letter, I mean, who decides who gets these letters?
That's a big issue.
Why is that a big issue?
I I think they're complaint driven.
Well, I have been told this, and yet when I asked, there are no complaints against them.
Where the words are written, everyone could get one right now.
That is absolutely not true, there is, I can give you a copy of it right now. And I know exactly why.
And I know one of the other ones, uh every neighbor in all four sizes have complained to the city about them, and and they've actually cleaned up their their property because of the letter.
But I agree that that council needs to know more about what's going on with the code enforcement activity, I think there's gotta be a better way to communicate so that you guys know, the hard part is the only time we ever seem to all get together is at a council meeting, that's not really the appropriate time to say, we sent a letter to this person and that, but you don't really wanna publicize that.
We shouldn't have to wait two weeks to send out the next letter if there's a problem.
Right, right, however, um so that, that's actually something the mayor and I talked about today, uh in our, when we met this morning, um and the the question of who is supposed to say, okay, a courtesy, or a letter needs to go out, or code enforcement needs to happen, the way the ordinance is written, it says the city clerk will do it, that is what council approved, was a direct, making the city clerk be responsible for that. Now, you guys have said since then, at the end of last year, you don't want me doing it, so I haven't been doing it, the mayor has kind of taken over that, we still need to change the ordinance, but the mayor doesn't wanna take on that responsibility either, he really, I mean, in a bigger city, you would see that as part of a planning and building department, you would have somebody that's the code enforcement officer, who would kind of be the person in charge of looking at those things and deciding whether it was based on complaints, whether it was based on their own drive-bys, just seeing something, or you know, whatever, they would be the person deciding, we don't have that person here, and that's really kind of a a challenge, because we, I think that that would really help us to have somebody who is uh not personally connected to eat, to the members of the of the community, that can be like a um a neutral person and can look at things and make those, make those decisions and say, okay, yeah, we need to send the building official out to check this out, or we need to send a letter here, but I don't know who's supposed to do that, I don't have those answers, but I do agree that that is a huge hole in our process that we have, that we need to fix, so.
Well, I think eventually, these courtesy letters will clean out the file that's there, and then you can just do it as they come in, and we don't have this backlog, it won't be an issue of being mighty mole, you can just say, oh, this came in, it was a courtesy letter, just like that.
There's just roses and rainbows everywhere. I can't wait, we had, we have a couple of comments out here, Julie, you had one?
My thing is that when you guys are having an issue about the courtesy letters going out and no one really knowing about it, maybe there could be um a list drawn up and given to the city council at the time those are done, that way you're all made aware of it, it can be tossed in your inbox, it doesn't have to be publicized, so um the mayor could be writing them up, or whatever, it could be a handwritten thing, it doesn't have to be typed, you know? That way then you guys would all know about it, and you wouldn't get, you know, shaken, or whatever, my son idiot, so.
Dawn, you have a question?
I do, um if if these are driven by um community member complaints, they actually come in here physically, and there's a lot of complaints for them, and now it seems to be this big, huge issue about, you gotta have code enforcement, laws passed, and all this kind of stuff, if that person can see it visually, can't that person see it visually if it's cleaned up? I think it it, you're not, um the city employee, I mean, give the guy a couple of extra dollars, I mean, uh all the money that's going out for other people, to do that, just go check, just go look at their property, they just don't think.
Contact the guy that complains?
It's not a big deal, I mean.
Well, I think in this case, where we're saying in the courtesy letter, you said, contact City Hall, when it's done, we'll schedule a time, and that's more of a friendly meeting at that point, right? And so you're coming out, you know, it doesn't matter if it's, if the mayor's doing it, or somebody, at that point, it's like, hey, look, we're good to go, and then there's no confrontation there, really.
Correct, yeah.
And can.
That could work out.
Can one of the council people, once that letter, once they come in and say, hey, this is taken care of, can one of us go out there and do it?
You wanna put yourself on the chopping block.
If they've come out to invite it, I don't have a problem going out to check it.
Your legal counsel would recommend that you don't do that.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean you can't. The the legal coun, legal council has recommended over and over again, the council stay out of those decision process, because your job as council is to set the laws and set the regulations, and then the mayor's job is to take those laws that you set and implement them with the public, so it's more of an administrative job to do that, but you wanna keep your counsel.
What if we had like a member of the park board, or?
Planning?
Planning, or something like that.
Someone that likes a lot of abuse?
Like Polo, he'd be great at that.
How about planning?
As a polo could get a letter.
That's true.
I don't think he'd be great at it then.
The hard part with the planning is that it's somebody from in the community, and it it's recommended, again, it's a recommendation that you get somebody that's not personally connected to the community, that's outside of the community, that doesn't have their own personal ties, and oh, maybe more lenient here, and oh, I don't like that guy, so a little tougher.
When they go home, they don't have to be next to the neighbor, they just serve a notice to.
Right, right.
So.
So to be wise, you would wanna pick somebody who's outside of the community, but you don't have to, that doesn't mean somebody in the community couldn't do a good job, I'm sure somebody could, would still be unbiased, but.
So for that fact, I know that um um my private investigator friend, he does things like that down in Vancouver, so maybe there's a private investigator that we can hire to follow up on this thing.
They're hiring somebody.
Now we're, now we're spending lots of money.
Well.
Okay, so say, somebody from the get or done group, could somebody from the get or done group?
Still, it's a local person.
Well, it's just a drive-by, right, just wanna see if the grass is gone, you're just gonna drive by their house.
Those two cars are gone, or whatever, yeah.
If it's a, if it's a drive-by, then then I don't think that there should be any issue for a drive-by.
No, a drive-by is no issue at all, but there's two, do you want to do that, you guys didn't want me to do drive-bys, so I don't know why you would want another city employee to do it, that doesn't have any training, he doesn't know anything about codes.
It's not, it's not about code, it's just about somebody cleaning up their yard in their junk, and somebody can just, somebody drove by to see the junk and made a complaint, they could try and find and see the junk.
I'm for the complainer.
It's cleaned up?
Drive-by.
If you, if you complain about it, you own it?
Yeah, if you complain, okay, now it's picked up. Yeah, complain, okay, now it's cleaned up.
There shouldn't be any confrontation at all.
Well, in this case, I think the, the agenda item at this point, it was, was the addition to the courtesy letter, right? That's, that's the agenda item?
And I agree with that one.
Yep.
Okay. What exact, did you get a sense of the verbiage that we were to add to it?
I have it on the recording, so I'll go back and listen to it again and write it correctly. I think I still do.
Obviously, the code enforcement officer is another topic. It needs to, we need to address that. It's, it's a big, it's a big one, so.
Could we make a note to put that on our next meeting, please?
Put all kinds of things on the next meeting.
We're going to be busy. Make sure you hear. I do, however, I think our idea, if I notice in our moment, who the letters go out to, or what the, what the complaint is, or whatever, might be kind of nice.
You want like a report similar to what we get from sheriff's department, or? Not going to be that many.
It doesn't need any names. It could just be an address and what the complaint is, something like, you know, so we, we are aware. I think that might.
I'm sure that's already, you have that, you have all that.
And as long as it's a, as, as long as it's a drive-by and it's a courtesy letter, I think that any of us, if we're driving by, can say, hey, by the way, I drove by
And it's done.
Mike's house, and that's been taken care of.
And I don't know that the mayor has any problem with doing the drive-by. I just think doing, you know, anyways, that probably wouldn't be a big issue if you guys are okay with that.
I don't want, know if I really, I've actually enjoyed, enjoyed is the wrong word, but not knowing everything that's going on.
Okay.
To, to some extent, right? I mean, it'd be nice to know how many, but I don't necessarily want to know that, that it's this person, this person, this person, this person. I don't, I don't need to know that.
My, my problem is, is when.
I'd like to, I know it's public record, but personal privacy.
Well, my problem is, is when someone pops up and says, oh, by the way, we need twenty-two thousand dollars to cover the four lawsuits we've got going on right now, and we don't have it. So could all of y'all get together and look in that budget and find the money for me, please? There's the problem I have. Because if you don't know all of this is going on, or you look at that and you go, ooh, okay, there might be a problem with that one, you're going to know that in advance, trust me. So that's the reason why I, I want to know. You can give me the address, and again, I will do a drive-by and look for myself and.
So then do we just leave that one alone?
Leave that one alone? No, you beware. Do you want to add three or four more to your little list? You might want to just tackle that one all alone. That would be my thought, Matt, Mike.
So the direction, so we already gave the direction to, to the city clerk to add the verbiage of the courtesy letters. Did we want to direct some type of update?
Put, put a, put a, a list or a note or something in our, our mailbox? And then if you don't want yours, then you don't have to pick yours up.
A copy, a copy of the courtesy notice? Is that, that, that was sent out?
Well, that would be fine, that would be fine. That, that's the first step. So yeah, that would be great.
Just make, make seven copies of it and put one in each of our boxes, and if you want to know what's going on, come pick it up anytime during business hours?
Wonderful. And it's not, it's not being nosy, but, you know, we also put in the letter that there's people available to help. And if these people aren't doing anything, you know, they need to know that there's people that are willing to help them.
Okay. All right. That works, that works. Easy enough, right?
Council?
All right. Anything else for courtesy letters, or are we moving on to number eight? Signage. Generic signage.
Signage. And I don't know if this is the appropriate forum to ask this, but last year, the Vader Assembly of God came to council and asked to have a metal sign made, which they did, a very nice one, and put on the post there at the corner of A Street. And I was kind of wondering if I could do the same for the community center. I go out every day and I strap my little sign to it, and I should like to have a sign about the size of the Assembly of God's sign made, and have a little metal sign made, and put there underneath theirs with an arrow pointing down for the community center and the thrift store. And it's just, I just thought I would bring it and see what you thought. Or if this isn't the proper forum, or what?
Where's the sign?
There's a big white, there are four by, four by fours or something, right at A Street, on my side of the street. And it says, I think it says the jail on it, or there's some other signage up at the top. And then the church came and wanted to put signage on it.
Oh, okay.
Just below, just below the city sign.
So it directs people down that way?
To, to direct them down there. And so I was just requesting to be underneath the church.
Community Center is a nonprofit, correct?
Pardon?
Community Center is an official nonprofit, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So we'd be allowing a sign for another nonprofit?
Yes. I think that's a wonderful idea, because if they don't turn there, they wouldn't know that that community center's there. And there's a lot of people in that community center. They, they come and go through that community center. There's a lot of the community that come in there.
Were those posts, were that, were those, did the church itself, did they put up all the posts in there?
No, we did those.
So it's our sign. We already have the post with the sign there, and they just said, can we attach ours onto your post?
So it is our, it is our jurisdiction, as it were?
So the sign would be the same as their sign, but, I mean, cohesiveness instead of?
Right, right.
I don't have a problem.
And I believe there's this metal, so I just go do a metal one, have a metal one done up.
Yeah.
Another comment from?
I'm just going to say that those directional signs to the park and everything, those were donated by the Vader Citizens League, and the city donated the posts to put them up.
All right. Motion? Concerns?
I'll make a motion that we.
You don't want to hear my concern, because it's just going to make people mad, so do what you want.
No, actually, I do want to hear. No, because I'm not going to go pay a bunch of money for a sign to find out that there's other issues to it. So what's the concern?
I'm trying, I'm trying to remember exactly, but I don't have a great, forget your memory. But when the church got approval by the council to put up that sign, we checked on it. And if memory serves, we weren't really supposed to allow private use of city, the city sign. But we did it anyway.
That's why I was asking about the nonprofit, because.
Yeah, but the church isn't really private. The community center isn't really private. I'm just.
I said you didn't want to hear it.
I know. I'm sorry, opened a can of worms.
I can't remember exactly. I don't remember exactly what the regulations were, but I remember talking to the mayor about it and saying, this is what we found. And he's like, well, it's not a big deal too. I just let it go, kind of the thing.
I think you should do it.
I think it's a.
I, I personally don't care.
It's a community center for our community, and if they don't know where it's at.
If somebody wants to get mad about it, we can take it down later.
That's a nice thing.
Well, we're only going to put the sign for the small businesses in the community.
That's why I asked if it was a nonprofit.
I mean.
How many nonprofits?
We're not going to be able to put that sign up then.
Oh, the kiosk for our.
We can't do it. It can't be on its own post. It wouldn't be on the city's post. It would be on city property, not necessarily.
Okay, so we're all good?
I, I'll raise my hand. Yes.
Yep.
Put your community center sign up.
Yes.
Our community center sign.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we got some.
Appreciate it.
Um, all right, moving on then?
Uh, Jill?
Yes.
One thing, a lot of people, or a lot of cities have a, like us, have a welcome to whatever sign. And they also have Rotary, Lions Club, and Masons, and Church of, Church of England, or whatever, on that, on their sign. And that, that might be, had that, had Judy signed the deemed illegal, unlawful, it might, the, the fallback, I'm going to suggest, would be put on the city welcome to Vader sign.
I think she wants to have it there on a corner or be.
Yeah, I, I, I realize that, but, but this is a fallback position.
Okay.
I'm not going to get into it, so.
But we are okay.
Well, good.
Public comment.
Public comment. All right, moving, moving on to public comment. Yes, 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 public comment.
We have Cindy Randcliffe.
Oh, gosh, it'd be nice. Oh, shut up.
Welcome, Cindy. Turn the volume down.
No.
Um, I'd like to know why the, the building official topic is not on the agenda. Last week, or at the last council meeting, Ms. Costello asked if it was going to be on the next agenda, and it's not. Several council meetings ago, the mayor was directed to go out and get more information, bring it back. No reports been given. I realize he hasn't been here the last couple, but he, I know he's been in town. He could have given a report to the clerk or to any of you people. I don't want this topic to fall into the black hole and just fade away, because I know last June, Mr. Daly asked the clerk to get more information on finding a less expensive option, and that fell into the black hole. Now, we're all talking about it again, and now three or four meetings have gone by and nothing's been done. It's no longer on the agenda. So I'd like to know what you're going to do about it. You all know my feelings about our current building official. I don't, I think he's too expensive. I don't think he's qualified for the position. So I think something needs to be done, and if the mayor can't make it to the meetings, and he can't get this done, then maybe somebody else could be appointed to do that topic, go talk to other jurisdictions. And let's move forward on this, because we've got people coming into town, we've got building going on, we've got new people in, and we need to get this addressed and get it changed as soon as possible. So if the mayor can't get it done, or hasn't been able to get it done for whatever reason, then maybe one of you five can do it, or somebody can be appointed to do it. But let's move forward and not let this fall into a hole somewhere, and just forget about it until next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Do you want to comment?
Um, I was going to comment too. After we talked, Cindy, I talked to the mayor about that specifically, and the guy that we, I believe the guy's name is Trent, does.
Trent Lowheed.
Trent Lowheed is the Chehalis guy that we were waiting on. It's, he's still been in communication with him, but we're waiting on Chehalis to clear things up so that we can use him. So it.
About the law for November month. Are they out now, or no?
Well, we're, the preferred one is this Trent guy. And so we're trying to, we're waiting for them to get back to us on that. So even though it sounds like nothing's been done, he has been in communication with them, and he is working on it.
That's why we poured maybe last time, or the time before would have been nice, just to let the rest of us people.
And I was, I was going to call you and let you know about that, but I forgot about it, so.
Well, I told, I told the mayor about Chehalis at least two months ago.
We're waiting on Chehalis, not on the mayor?
No, no. I talked to, I talked to the mayor and gave him all the information that he was supposed to get with Chehalis. And.
And he has, and he has, that's all been done, now we're waiting on Chehalis?
Yeah, the initial, the initial communications have been made.
Okay.
And follow-up communications have been.
As far as I know, it fell off into Cindy's black hole.
Jill, would you like a minute?
The mayor. Chehalis has a black hole as well.
The mayor said that if this topic came up, he asked if I would please share with the council and the community, that every council meeting he has been at, he has mentioned something about being in contact with the city of Chehalis and working with Trent Lowheed, that he has been waiting for them. Yeah, go back and listen. It's in the minutes. So in any event, in any event, he has been working on it continuously, and there was a long period of waiting for them to finish their contract with the county before they would know if that was something that we could work on with them. They have finally finished. The mayor just spoke with them earlier this week, that they have finally finished their contract with the county. Now they are sending over the fee schedule to the mayor. The mayor has not received it as of this morning, had not received the fee schedule yet to see what it would cost to have them do our building official work. But that is very, very close to you. They said that they would send it today, and he hadn't received it in the morning, but, so there will be more coming very shortly. But it has not fallen into the black hole, and it has been asked about and mentioned at several of the council meetings. So you missed that, I'm sorry, but.
Can we put an update on it for the next?
Absolutely. And the mayor is planning on addressing those three concerns that Judy brought up at the last council meeting, but she said she wanted the mayor to be there. And the mayor's not here, so we didn't put it on the agenda. But we'll definitely have those three items on the agenda.
Why is the only gentleman that we're looking into are the only?
And what happened to Council Rock, because, because Council Rock was willing to share theirs with us? To talk to the mayor about that, as to why those didn't pan out. I only can talk my head, so.
But the general consensus is that we do want to move away from the current, from the current building official, and, and it's going to happen. All right? Public comment? That was more than three minutes, I think. All right. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-four PM.